Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, December 11th, 2017. At this time, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, again, I want to say it's a privilege to be here. And you guys can look at me, and I've been coming here, Lordy mercy, about forty-some years during this invocation. I'll tell you, Deb, before we came tonight, you know, it made time for somebody else to kind of come along and do this a little bit more. But I've always enjoyed praying. I've enjoyed, and I've always supported, our city, our City Council, and those who serve us, the Fire Department, the Police Department. I've been a friend to all of you because I pray for you just about every day. So, we're going to pray tonight. We have so much going on in our world today. We have a lot of sadness, a lot of hurt. There's a lot of crying and tears tonight all over our land due to circumstances beyond our control. But I pray that our city here will grow and we'll see good things happen, and apparently what we're doing is looking good. I pray that it'll continue to grow and do good. Amen. So, Father in heaven, we want to thank you for your great love, first of all, and for your amazing grace that makes provisions for our lives and living every day. We thank you for this privilege and honor to stand one more time before our City Council of the City of Series and pray for these dear men and women, or that they will carry out their duties and their responsibilities in a way that pleases you. It'll do the things that are right in the eyes of God as well as in the eyes of men. We've prayed for them tonight. We ask for divine wisdom and strength, inner strength, to be able to make decisions that are right. Sometimes, it's hard. I know it's hard. It's hard for these men and women to make decisions sometimes because it's so hard. But I pray that you'd give them inner strength, inner power, and I pray you'd give them a great vision for this city, continue to watch over our city. May the love of God and the grace of God hover over our city and keep us from the many evil things that are happening. We ask you, Father, again, to bless and keep us close to you and remind each of us of our God-given responsibilities, to honor you and love you and follow the will of God in all things that we do in our lives. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Condit. Next, we were scheduled to have a presentation for Planning Commissioner Hugo Molina, but I think he's en route, might have a little bit of traffic, so I think we're going to jump over that item, and when he gets here, we'll come back to it. So, at this time, I will move on to Citizens Communication to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda
Do I need to say my name and address? I think everybody here.
You can just, I think now we just require your name, not the address.
Leonard Shepherd, but...
If you didn't say twenty-eight forty Fowler, I guess we wouldn't know.
No, no. I don't think I need to say that. And for those of you who are a little more relaxed, it's Shep. But I just want to say that our city sure looks a heck of a lot cleaner than our neighbors. We still have some trashy people, but I think Reverend Condit is asking the good Lord to look down on them and give them a little bit of a nudge to clean up. But I tell you, we took a little drive the other night, the wife and I, and we got into the line, and we went around Christmas Tree Lane. And we ended up Christmas Tree Lane with the white dog on the corner there where Ken Lane hangs his hat. And it was so beautiful that everybody, I just wish that I could have done what a lot of them were doing, is walk. But that's not in the cards right now. Maybe in a few months, I'll be able to walk again. But I got to tell you, the City Council here is more entertaining and more enjoyable on Monday nights than whatever else there is because I sure got bored when I was gone. But I'm glad to be back, and I'm going to be here until the good Lord says, "You got to get that knee fixed." Then I'll get it fixed, then I'll be back. And I just want to thank Reverend Condit for his hard work and hard praying to keep this city in line, and I think he's doing a pretty fair job. So, my thanks go out to all of you and hope for a merry, merry Christmas, not a white one. I had enough of that before when I lived up in the mountains. I don't want a white Christmas. I want a nice, peaceful Christmas and a nice Christmas for everyone. And we'll see you next year.
Anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agend item?
Good evening. Sheila Brandt, 2104 Haley Aloha. I just want to say how great downtown's looking, or I just can't wait till we get the arches up. Oh, it's just looking so awesome down there, and you guys, great job. And I also just want to say how proud I am of our citizens. This Friday, we will be having the hoedown for Sam's Cafe to try and help out their employees, and we've had such an outpouring from our citizens. And it's just so great to be in a community when things are needed, that we can all pull together and help each other. And I just am just very proud to say that I live in Series. I also want to let you guys know, if you don't already know, Saturday will be Reef's Across America out at San Anella, and it's a great, humbling, humbling experience to go out there and watch the presentation and lay the reefs upon the graves. You take a reef, you put it on the grave, you kneel down, you say the person's name, and you thank them for their sacrifice. And it's just a really moving time out there. So, if you get a chance to go out there, it starts at nine o'clock on Saturday morning. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everybody that had anything to do with Christmas Tree Lane. I take my dog down there every night, but he stays in my truck. And I'd like to say happy birthday to Mr. Condit. His birthday is December the 25th, nineteen eleven B.C. Mine was December the 25th, nineteen forty-four. So, we was born on the same day, just a little bit difference in time and history.
Gene Aickley, Series. I want to thank the city, whoever is responsible for putting up the no parking on service and Mitchell out there for the semis after Toby Wells, and kind of got excited last time I was here about that. It seems to be working. I still continuously go through that area and sometimes in the evening during the daytime too, and I'll call the Series Police Department and let them know. And I hope, and I'm sure some of these gentlemen back here have cited some of them. If they haven't, we got to start citing them. And this is just part of cleaning up the city. And as Leonard's been up here many years, many times, talks about it, I've talked about it, we have to consider the neighborhoods. Businesses and everything else is fine with the neighborhoods we live in, and the idea of people coming in here in Series and seeing what they're seeing, like the trash and all this stuff. I still believe that it's going to be a while before people realize that it's a place they want to do business in and maybe live there. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, has Mr. Molina showed up? I don't think I've seen him yet, so, okay. We will move on to appointments to Boards and Commissions. Item number A, Planning Commission Appointment. As a result of Planning Commissioner Molina stepping down, we had an opening for the Planning Commission. There was a application filing period, and we had an applicant that has applied, and we will be making the recommendation of Mr. David Johnson. I know all of our packets have a copy of his application, and I don't know, Mr. Wells, is there anything that we need to, do I make a recommendation on this?
Yes, Mayor, it'd be your recommendation for Council's consideration. We left it a little bit open just because we only, we did only receive the one applicant. There was some interest expressed after the application period closed, so if the Council wanted to change that overall direction, but we kept it with, you know, your ability to make the recommendation that you feel comfortable for Council's consideration.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Johnson here, if you wanted to come up and say a couple words, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I will. So, you'll get to speak a lot if you're on the Planning Commission, so you might as well get started now, I guess. Is there any, well, let me ask, is there anyone on the Council that had any questions?
No.
No? No? Just a couple of questions. I know you've been a long time in the community. Was it about twenty-five years at the residence and forty years in Series? Is that correct? Okay.
My parents moved here in nineteen seventy-five.
Okay, and I'm assuming you're looking forward to serving on the Planning Commission?
I am.
Okay. All right, if there isn't any other questions, I would make a recommendation that we appoint Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Welcome aboard. You just signed up. Mr. Westbrook will reach out to you, I'm assuming, and get you all set up with, you know, your binder and give you some of the background. I noticed that some of your Commission members are here as well, and so you might want to, I would probably ask them to introduce themselves to you when you get a chance, and then you'll, we'll be able to.
Whatever's convenient for them. I just look forward to serving the community and hopefully helping out and making a difference.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Resolution Number 2017-108, Reappointing Brandy Meyer to the Twomey River Regional Parks Citizen Advisory Committee for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2019. Mr. Wells, is there anything you wanted to comment on this?
Yeah, pretty straightforward item, Mayor, unless there are any questions, no additional information from staff.
Are there any questions of staff in the Council? Okay, with that, I guess I'll, well, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none. Yeah. Wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Shepherd?
After serving for thirteen years on the Twomey River Regional Park Committee, and I served some of the time with Brandy, I think she's a very, very good person to be on that committee. She loves the park, she loves the committee, and she loves Series, just like I do, so I think you're going to make a right move by reappointing her.
Councilmember Rhino?
Mayor, is it for a two-year term or a four-year term? The agenda says two, and the staff report says four.
That was my error. I apologize. After I had finalized the agenda, before I posted it, I found out it was a four-year term.
Okay. That was my only question.
I apologize. That's my fault.
Okay, with that, I'll look for direction from the Council.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2017-108 with the amendment to a four-year term.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you. Now, at this time, I'd like to go back to the presentation section where we have a presentation to Hugo Molina for his years of service on the Planning Commission. I do have a plaque here, and it basically states, "In grateful appreciation to Hugo Molina for community public service as Planning Commissioner, City of Series, from January 2010 to December 2017, presented this 11th day of December 2017, City of Series, Series
Counsel, a bit nervous here. It's been an exciting journey. It was a privilege. It has been a privilege serving the City of Series. I have grown a lot, came to know a lot of great people, had the opportunity to have an input in a lot of the projects that we now see around, you know, as a living reality, and I've always been grateful to you for the opportunity that you gave me to serve as a Planning Commissioner, or grateful for the many decisions that you've made for the betterment of the city, you know, overall. I think that either as a Planning Commission or as a Councilman, the minute you make the decision to sit on that chair, you're wholeheartedly wanting to make an impact in the city, and it's not an easy job, you know? A lot of people who come to these meetings, they see you, they see us sitting there, and it may seem that we have the answer to every single thing, and sometimes it's not that easy or not as simple. It's just we walk away hoping that we made the right decision. And just like today, you know, I walk away from the Planning Commission hoping that I leave a lasting impression, you know, in the city and the choices that I've made, and overall, you know, hoping that we continue to achieve just like we have thus far. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity and for this recognition that I'm given today. Thank you all.
Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, Hugo, I'd like to make a comment, and, you know, I want to thank you because, you know, I'm one of the only ones on this Council that got to serve on the Planning Commission with you, and I watched, you know, myself grow, you know, on the Planning Commission along with you, watching you grow, and the friendship that I believe that you and me have shared. Me being able to reach out to you and talk to you about discussions that you've had on the Planning Commission, you know, has been invaluable to me. And, you know, I thank you for coming into, you know, a situation and being a friend and helping me. So, I thank you for being a friend and helping the city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel, and thank you, City of Series.
And Hugo, I wanted to make a few comments. I think I was one of the ones that had made a recommendation for your appointment. I had thought you've done a great job. It's hard to believe it's already been seven years. It's amazing how time flies, but I think you have always been somebody that has been very rational and stable in your decisions, and I think as you drive around the city and look at the projects that you had your fingers on when they came across the Planning Commission, I think you can say, hey, a lot of good things were accomplished, and for that, I appreciate your hard work and dedication. I know you have a business that's in La Spanish, and so it's a long drive to try to make it back, and I know there was many times when you probably made the sacrifices for the community, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move to Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the Consent Calendar items, Public Hearing item, or three new business items? All right, I do have a conflict of interest on item number ten, the Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 2017-1044. I actually own property adjacent to this, the applicant, so I'm within the range of having to conflict myself out of that. So, I will step down at that time and turn it over to the Vice Mayor. And with that, we will move to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are listed, or, excuse me, are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual Council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be acted, accepted, and acted upon by roll call vote. Before I get to the Consent Calendar item, there's one thing that I need to read, that is, before we take action on the Consent Calendar, I'd like to publicly announce that last year Governor Brown signed SB 1436 legislation requiring that the City Council orally report a summary of any council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers. Accordingly, before the City Council this evening, as part of Agenda Item Number Seven, is the recommendation to approve Amendment Number Two to the employment agreement with Brent Smith, Police Chief. The amendment provides for a 7.5% educational incentive, which is in line with what other managers already receive. So, with that, we will move to the Consent Calendar. Is there anyone on the, excuse me, the Council that would like one of the Consent Calendar items pulled for further discussion? Eight? Eight. Okay. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item eight? Nine. Okay. Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the Council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve one, two, three, four, five, A and B, and six and seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, item number eight, Resolution Number 2017-111, awarding the construction contract for the traffic signal modification and intersection improvements at Mitchell Road and Roding Road intersection, CML 5241-060 to George Reed, Inc., authorizing a 10% contingency, approve the budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Vice Mayor Klein?
Yeah, I see in the staff report that there's a budget amendment in the staff report. Can any measure L funds be used for this project?
They could. However, we only need $10,000 to fully fund the project, and with the funding sources that we already have committed to this project, it's likely that if the project comes in at where we expect it without using the full contingency, we won't use those monies. So, we didn't want to allocate or tie up those measure L funds when this wasn't a project that was listed in our first couple of years of the measure L funds, so we felt it was more consistent to stick with our existing funding sources, which was CMAC, the federal funds, and our public facilities fees as the matching funds. So, likely, as long as the contingency use is below 5%, which has been our seven-year running average, then we wouldn't even use these dollars, but we need to show that we have it fully funded. But the answer to your question is measure L could be used. We don't think it's a good location for those funds because we have a lot of other locations that we'll be using measure L funds for.
But knowing what we had to put together a plan, and you had these in place, why wasn't they included in measure L funding?
Because we already had this project identified as being funded by those other funding sources.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll look for direction.
Move to adopt Resolution 2017...
Oh, you got, you won eight, too?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I thought you just had nine. Sorry, Dave.
I apologize.
Eight, nine. Yes, are you, is part of the project on this putting curves and gutters in, or is that going to be done later?
Just at the corners. This is just the intersection improvements to provide for left-turn lanes from Roding onto Mitchell. It's the primary project.
All right, as far as I see right now, you're not, basically, you're just upgrading the electrical part of that, and sooner or later, you're going to be, have to put the curves and gutters in, and if you make the same mistake that you've done at Fowler and Mitchell Road, you're not, you're going to have issues down the road, same issues that I have in that there. Luckily, there was a Saturday, I walked to the Christmas tree thing, and a car was six feet back. If it wasn't for the fact that I pushed the signal, those people would still have been sitting there. Now, those strips not working, and the only way they work is if the vehicle is up to the line or in the crosswalk. And so, hopefully, if you wind up putting in your strips and everything in, and then putting the curves and gutters in later, you're going to have the same issues.
Move to adopt Resolution 2017-111.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, Dave, come on up. Resolution Number 2017-112, awarding the contract for the traffic signal maintenance and repair service to Bear Electrical Solutions and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
One thing is, I hope they do a better job than Modesto's been doing on their own lights. I can't even do their own lights, let alone somebody else's. And hopefully... And hopefully, they'll get some of the light, some of these services in this town straightened out. That's the only thing I had to say, is I hope they do a better job than Modesto's been doing.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
Mr. Pratt, I do agree with you. And I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Wells on that situation with the timing and the different aspects. And the reason that we are going to an outside company is because we did contract out to Modesto City, and they weren't maintained on a regular basis up to, you know, what we need to do. So this is the reason we went out to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wells, to another source because we didn't feel we were getting the service that we needed.
Well, after they come in and start working on it, I'll let you know if they're doing a good job or not.
Please do, because I've already mentioned that to Mr. Wells before this came up to our agenda about two months ago. So.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council.
Move to adopt resolution 2017-112.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Vera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, now we'll move to public hearings, and I will turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay, public hearing in consideration of introduction of ordinance 2017-1044, approving a development agreement for Case Journey project located at 4030 Farm Supply Drive. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Klein. As we have moved along this journey of, pardon the pun, but this, call it evolution of conversation related to cannabis industries. About a year ago was the first time this council had a conversation related to cannabis. In December of 2016 was the first time we did a discussion item relative to AUMA, which is Prop 64, which legalized recreational cannabis in California. So here we are a year later, and this would be the third item for consideration by the council relative to a legalized dispensary, in this case, a medical dispensary there at 4030 Farm Supply Drive located basically the intersection of Farm Supply, Brewmaster, and Service Road. The applicant, which this council knows well, Mr. Mike Reynolds, was the first in the city and really the first in Stanislaus County to obtain a development agreement for the Case manufacturing product, which was a small cultivation site as well as a manufacturing for the, what most people refer to as Jaden's Juice, which is a CBD product that is manufactured there at their facility. It would be an adjacent property. So they are moving forward on a dispensary opportunity here within the City of Series. The dispensary, again, would be medical only. The DA is set up similar to the last DA that was considered by this council for medical dispensary purposes. The development agreement uses those same terms and conditions, and we look for any direction the council may have on this particular item. The staff is recommending to conduct the public hearing, take any input. Planning Commission did recommend the approval of this item. There was a considerable conversation at the Planning Commission relative to the use of the funds from the public benefit, as this council has discussed on two previous occasions of how best to utilize those funds. And from a staff perspective, we recommend those be general fund, as it does affect, as we know, 80% of our general fund is public safety. So those funds go there. But it also does have an impact on both, you know, multiple departments from the city manager's office to the planning department in managing these activities and ensuring that the operations of these facilities that we're approving are consistent with all of the regulations that we've put in place. And so as we know, we've put some strict controls on these operations from a development agreement, conditional use permit, cannabis business permit, and up and down the line. So there is a pretty rigid oversight of these industries, and this would be the third. Our next step in the process, depending on where you go with this on the cannabis conversation, would be to come back in January to give you an update on the regulations that have recently been issued by the state. They've issued their emergency regs. Those came out in the middle of November. So we'll be coming back with an overall discussion in January. I'm not sure on which date, whether it's January 8th or January 22nd, but one of those two dates with an overview of the new regulations, what that means to the existing DEAs that we've already approved, and this one as well, as well as look for your direction on the other items we may want to consider, such as testing and some of the other businesses that are continuing to ask questions about this overall industry as we move forward. So with that, I look forward to any questions you may have.
Does anybody on the, does anybody on the council have questions for staff? Comments? If not, I'll open it up to the public.
I want to ask a question. How many dispensaries are we planning on having in Series?
That, Mr. Condon, hasn't been determined, but.
How many do we have? How many do we have already?
We, right now, we've only approved for one dispensary, and that is on, over off Angie Way, over off Mitchell and Hatch Road. This one would be, if the council decides to move forward, this will be the second one. And, you know, after this, my recommendation is to put a brakes on it.
I would say amen to that right quick. If you don't, as I said way back when we first approved the medical dispensary or the medical whatever, I said if we don't put a brake on this, we'll have dispensaries all over town. And we need, this is something that we need to take control of, or you guys need to take control of, as quick as you can, because we got, you got to put a brake on this, and or we're going to have marijuana floating down the street. And so I'm just telling you guys, I've been around a long time, and I'm telling you, when the devil gets his foot into something, you give him an ant, he'll take a foot. So you, you guys got some responsibility here to put a brake on this. And I say that kindly and lovingly. But I'm telling you, this marijuana stuff is just going haywire and crazy. But our prayers, my prayers with you, I want you, I want you to do something right about this. Amen? I could preach a sermon right here on it, but I'm not. About marijuana, medical or recreational, everybody knows that I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I was in Area 4 of Vietnam, one of the worst areas that they sprayed Agent Orange. And the first that they come up here, a guy said, "Norothopy." And now, after 12 years, they told me last week that I had neuropathy. So is marijuana going to be good for me, or is it not going to be good for me? I can't even talk to my doctor about marijuana. If I get caught with marijuana, I lose all my benefits from the federal government. So how can a person put his life on the line for the Constitution of the United States of America in Vietnam and fight for this country and can't even have it if it's good for him? And the doctors won't even allow me to talk to them about this. It's a, it's a drug. It's something that's going to really hurt this community in the long run. If you need this, why don't you go to a drugstore and have a doctor? How do they know how much marijuana that I can smoke or take or whatever if they don't have a doctor there to give me the right amount? How do they know that? If they, if they don't have a doctor there, here's a pack of marijuana cigarettes, smoke them all in four hours, and then come back? How is this going to be controlled? Okay, we're going to have a bunch of, bunch of guys walking down the sidewalk, little
Is there anybody else? So before I bring it back to council for, oh, I'm sorry.
Paula Redfern. Well, first, I'd like to start with a little history of when this all started with Case. All respect to Mr. Reynolds. At that time, he stated that the reason he was doing this to grow the marijuana strain for his son and others was, excuse me, I lost my train of thought. He stated that he was a Christian, and he was against marijuana, never smoked it, but he was doing it for the medicinal reasons. And he would never think of doing anything else. Well, now, the city's approved the other dispensary over on Angie, so now he wants to open a dispensary. Well, there's a big difference between a dispensary and a grow facility where it's located basically immediately adjacent to a residential community with a park three-tenths of a mile away. So I have a main concern there. Number two, I've done a lot of research with a lot of potheads recently, and I learned I can get a medicinal marijuana card. All I have to do is log on, give my contact information, I get a phone call, they interview me, "Why do you need a card?" "Oh, I hurt my back, I got a back pain." Okay. They send me a number, they send me a text or an email. I get a number, that's what I use when I go into a dispensary. Then they mail me a copy of the paper, and for $20 more, I can get a card. So even though I agree there are benefits to medicinal marijuana, as far as it being for medicinal purposes, quite frankly, it's a joke. Like I said, I have been making contact with a number of regular smokers of marijuana for recreational use that have medicinal marijuana cards, but they have no medical reason to legitimately have it. And that's what's going to happen here. One individual visited the one that is the sister business of the one that's going to go in here on Angie, the one in Modesto, visited it on Friday. No medical reason, but they were able to get the marijuana they needed. My other concern is, and I mentioned it at the Planning Commission meeting, is I measured the distances from San Marino Park to the facility is three-tenths of a mile, a couple blocks, not even. Strawberry Fields Park, you know, it's 0.68 of a mile, or rounded up to seven-tenths of a mile. The elementary school's right next door to Strawberry Fields Park. We got Kitty Kingdom right there at the intersection of Morgan and Service, and it's only a quarter mile away. When I bought my house and all the other good folks bought their homes, you know, you're given all the disclaimers of, you know, what's around you and all that. Obviously, this wasn't one of them. So for us and the residents that I spoke to on Sunday in the area that unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, they're extremely concerned because they know, because they see it already, and it's only going to increase the amount of traffic going into the residential area around the parks and the side streets where the kids and other people sit and they smoke their pot. You can smell it, you can see it, and with it in direct proximity to those areas now, the availability, they're going to go do it, right there. That's our fear. And it's legit because I've seen them do it. So my concern is that, and I stated this at the meeting the night you approved Case before, was that you guys were going to just see the dollar amount because I know the city needs money. But you were going to see that dollar amount, and you were going to get greedy. And opening up dispensaries when initially you guys stated, or at least gave the perception that you were against them, and now we're looking at number two, not to mention the ones within the sphere of influence in the county that are going to be in the general area on the west side over there of Series, you know, we're very concerned. We're going to have an overconcentration of marijuana in our city. And anyway, that's all I pretty much have to say. I wish you'd consider the residents, excuse me, the residents in that area and not just what the money's going to be in the coffers for the city. I agree, we need the money. This is not the way to do it. Tighten the restraints, quit spending money on things we really don't need until the budget gets better. Thank you.
Is there anybody else I'd like to address in council? So with that, I'll close the public hearing. And before I bring it back to the council for consideration, there's a few comments that I would like to make. And that is, you know, after reading the Plan Commission meetings, there were a number of good points. And, you know, Paula, I will say you brought up a bunch of good points as far as, you know, location, parks, schools, you know, the kitty, the things like that. And yet, you know, how do you decipher when it's in a light industrial area and the buffer zone and whatnot? And, you know, that's, that's one of those fine lines of where you go with it, because you look at Angie Way, and then you look at the Mobile Home Park that's just, you know, not even a tenth of a mile away. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to decipher that, you know. But let it be known that it's, to reiterate this, this is for medical cannabis retail only, and a separate agreement and license will be needed for all other purposes. There's a concern over parking, and this is a standalone business. You know, that was one of my main, main things was the parking on the last one and that it was a standalone business. So, you know, with that, it is. The second thing is, is, you know, things were brought up about security. Well, right now, Case Manufacturing, you know, has a security firm that they're working with, and they, what I understand, and Mr. Reynolds can correct me, but they're planning on working with the same security firm and doing the same kind of security that they have at their manufacturing with Case's Journey. You know, the city, the Planning Commission had brought up, and to try to, you know, ask the council to earmark this for public safety. Well, right now, 80% of our general fund is for public safety. So, you know, with that being said, when the budget time comes around, you know, I can speak that we know that 80% of these funds will be used for public safety and going in that direction. The last thing I'd like to say, you know, as we, as a council, we have approved one cannabis medical manufacturing facility and one medical cannabis retail, and we have a second one in front of us. And after, after we take care of, you know, which direction the council decides to go on this, you know, I would like to direct staff, or I'd like to ask staff to, you know, put everything else on hold until we can come back after the first of the year and work on things as far as what types of licensing, manufacturing, retail outlets for medical and adult use, because it's here to stay. The other thing is, is I would like to see us incorporate, you know, our public safety in these discussions, because this does affect them. I think for the most part, you know, I can speak for myself, I've reached out to a few of them, but they have not been at the table 100%. So after, you know, action tonight, I would like to see that we incorporate and use our police department and our fire department and talk to them about how this affects them and what it's going to do to their resources. So with that being said, I've made my comments. I can support this. You know, Case Manufacturing has done an excellent job and forthright in so far with what they've done and how they've conducted themselves. So with that being said, I'll bring it to the council for comments or action. Ms. Rhino?
Well, initially, I was, I had my reservations about any type of cannabis operation in the city. And I remember when we discussed the one up on Angie, that the mayor said, "Well, we might as well get the revenue from it because it's going to be all around us." Now I've, and I agreed with him, I thought that made a lot of sense. Well, now I see that the county has said that they will recognize the cities that choose to be dry cities and will not permit any cannabis activity within half a mile of a city's sphere of influence. Had I known that, I probably wouldn't have agreed with the facility up on Angie, because I'm afraid that we're going to be known as the cannabis capital of Stanislaus County, and that's not what I want for our city. I want our city to still be thought of as a family city. I don't want it to be that suddenly all we can see is the cannabis trees and all the money floating down, and it's going to help the city. I don't think it is going to help the city because at some point, there's going to be an oversaturation of these facilities in the county. And then what happens? We've earmarked. We've earmarked this money that we don't even have, and they've had to close because there are too many businesses, and so that's not going to help us out. And it's not going to help us out when we find out that there are issues with these dispensaries, we require more police, we have to hire more police, so any of the money that we thought is going to help our budget really isn't because we're hiring more police officers. So you can already tell where I'm going, I'm not, I'm not in support of another dispensary. And if the rest of the council decides they are, I would at least ask you to wait until the one on Angie has been open for a little while before you approve another one, so you can see if you need to make changes to a DA or not.
How long does a DA last?
Three-year term, is what's proposed.
It's a three-year term?
So all three, all three of the DAs that have been considered have been a three-year term with annual review of each of those. So at a minimum annually, if not sooner. And likely with where we're at in the overall regulation process, it would likely be reviewed sooner just because of, you know, this is still a new industry, newly regulated, these regulations that just came out from the state, you know, there's likely to be some changes as we go to be reflective and consistent with what state law has indicated.
Right. I just see where Angie is right now, and one of the things that I had an opportunity to talk with, one of the members out of Modesto, and where that dog pound is right now is where a nice little dispensary was going to go, or a place of people can, dispensary. And, you know, we already lose a lot of money within the city as it is, a lot of money leaks out. And again, I don't want to be known as a marijuana town either, to be honest with you. But this is an opportunity for us to at least grasp from revenue, at least right at this moment, and kind of see how things go. You know, again, as it's being reviewed each year and within a three-year term, I mean, if for some reason it just doesn't work, then we just close them and we move on. You know, but at the same time, we're going to see a lot saturated, probably dispensaries popping up in Turlock or Modesto, I know there's some in Empire. I believe the two groups that we have currently have already shown and have been in the business and know what they're doing, and I think that is going to allow them to be successful and allow us to be successful in generating those dollars. I've had, and I'm sure you guys on the council have had, all kinds of people come to you and want to open a dispensary, or say, "Hey, why don't you open one with me?" And, you know, it's kind of like the first thing I say to them, "Do you know what you're doing?" And at the same time, I know when Mike came on board with Case Manufacturing and the gentleman that opened up on Angie, they've been in business for quite a while, they've had a lot of success, they've made a lot of money for the area and the cities that they actually serve. So, you know, I'm all for this, I think instead of 80%, I think it's 100%, other than maybe we give some money back to some groups to, because I know Paula talked about, you know, if you can get a card anywhere, and so maybe we throw some in to people that have issues with marijuana, or maybe issues with opioids, or whatever the case is, you know. But this here is a situation whereas I believe that it's going to assist us when times right now in this city are tough financially, so.
Councilmember Rhino?
Mr. Wells, the three years for these DAs, if they find, if these businesses find out that there is an oversaturation, they don't have to continue for three years, they can just cut their ties and run, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So there again, I want to caution the council not to spend money that you don't have thinking that this is going to save you because you don't have the money in your pockets yet. And I think that's what the council has been doing for years, is overspending and just don't, it's like Walmart. Walmart was going to be our saving grace, and now they aren't going to come until 2019. So they're not going to be our saving grace either, and I honestly don't know that the cannabis dispensaries are going to be either.
You know, with that being said, I do agree with you, councilmember Rhino, as far as don't spend in the money that we don't have, but in retrospect also, you know, that is why I'm asking, you know, and I made a comment that after, you know, we, whatever action we take on this thing in front of us, that we put the brakes on it and we have a discussion as far as what direction we want to go, and, you know, what we're going to allow and what kind of licenses. Because, you know, I did have in my notes, and I did not put it, was, you know, what Stanislaus County is going to do with their dispensaries and with their sphere of influence. Because, you know, the city of Turlock is not going to allow dispensaries, so, you know, they made a commitment to keep it, you know, a half mile or a mile out of their jurisdiction or their sphere of influence. So with that, you know, we'd like to be at the table, and I would like to say that to Mr. Wells, when Stanislaus County wants to put a dispensaries in close to our sphere of influence, you know, what kind of impact that will have on us and what we're doing. So, you know, I would like to at least be on the, sitting at the table with the county when they decide their locations and jurisdictions. So any more comments from the council? Okay. So what's the council's direction?
Move to consider ordinance number 2017-1044 and the development agreement DA 1714 for the Casey Journey projected.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Motion passes 4-0 and one abstention by Mayor Viera, actually, one recusal by Mayor Viera due to conflict of interest.
Okay.
Three.
Three, three-one, three-one with one abstention. Now, if I could get, Darrell, would you please run out there and get the mayor? Thank you, sir.
Okay, next we will move to new business, item number 11, resolution number 2017-113, declaring 2018 as the year of Series 100 year, 100th incorporation anniversary. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, my pleasure to present an update on the efforts of the Centennial Committee over the past year. As the folks in the audience can see, we have a banner here in front, which is, was created by the committee over the past year of getting ready to celebrate our 100th year of incorporation, or our birthday party, as we like to say. So first, I'd like to ask those in the audience that are part of the Centennial Committee, if you could stand up. So as you can see, this is some of the crew that has been working, so I would like to thank them for their efforts, and we've been meeting monthly over the past year, and you guys can have a seat, but again, appreciate all your efforts. So the committee has jumped into this with, with really both feet, coming up with a plan of attack of how we should be celebrating next year, and so this evening is really an update for the council, letting you know where we're at in the overall process and then looking for your direction on the resolution, and then just highlighting a couple issues. So as we referenced in the staff report, a couple of the key accomplishments for this year. One, you know, created a slogan, so as you can see on our logo there, it's "Series Centennial, celebrating our community." Created a mission statement, so the mission statement goes this way, "The mission of the City of Series Centennial Committee is to commemorate and celebrate 100 great years of our city. Through planned events, activities, and commemorative products, the goal of our committee is to bring our citizens together to celebrate the birthday of our ever-growing community in which we live, work, and play. By encouraging City of Series residents and businesses to participate in this 100th birthday party, we will foster community partnerships, create civic pride. We are not only honoring the past and where our city has come from, but also focusing on the future and where it is going. It's time to say cheers to the last 100 years of our city and look forward to our next 100 years." So that kind of encapsulates what the committee has been working on. Had a logo contest, a local high school student created a logo that is being used, it's seen here on the front on the banner. We are also asking the council, it's included in the resolution, to be able to use that Centennial logo as part of our letterhead for all of 2018 on all of our communications that come out of the city, that we think that'll be a good way to celebrate. We'll also be incorporating that into some banners that we're working to put down in our downtown on Fourth Street with a new project there. And we've come up with a schedule of events, and those are included. The kickoff would be our council meeting on February 26th, where we would do a celebration, have other dignitaries, invite all of the past elected officials to come join us in that celebration and kickoff the year, and celebrating the actual date of incorporation being February 25th, so it'd be the Monday, the 26th is when we'd have that first meeting. Gala planned for March 23rd, and then all of our normal activities for the year will have a centennial theme, that being street fair, concerts in the park, Halloween festival, and then kind of accumulating at the end with the Christmas tree lane festivities there at the end of the year. And we're also open to the idea of other opportunities as they come up through the year, so we're looking forward to those little things that may pop up where other civic groups may want to have some activity. The committee is open to those ideas, and so we consider this to be somewhat of an outline, the activities planned for the year. We've also, as I've shown here on the screen, the Centennial Plaza, so this is out, right outside the community center here on the corner, just in the parking lot. This would be a little opportunity for us to kind of celebrate our centennial, and so this concept was created by Chad Kennedy Odell Engineering. They've volunteered and donated these design services to create a concept that the committee has recommended approval for. You can see the 1918 and the 2018 there on the fronts of those pillars, with the opportunity for some sponsorship activities there on the bricks, and then putting the Centennial logo there in the middle of that diagram. The idea would be to, the fundraising efforts through the course of the year would raise money for this, it's estimated this would cost about $15,000. So all of our fundraising efforts would go towards the construction of this Centennial Plaza there in a small landscaped area right behind the curb on the corner here of Fourth and Magnolia. The committee has put together a sponsorship package, to be able to send out letters to all our businesses in our community and look for those individuals to help us support these activities, and we'll also be doing merchandise, like shirts and hats and coins and those type of things, and we look forward to having a heck of a good party next year. So with that, look for the council with any questions you may have, and look for direction on the resolution.
Are there any questions of, or comments from the council? I think it looks nice, I appreciate all the hard work that the committee is doing, it's a pretty big deal, 100-year celebration, so I'm looking forward to, you know, the events that we're going to have. One comment on the student that designed the logo, are we going to do anything for them, maybe some recognition? I mean, obviously, we have some recognition, but it's pretty impressive that they did something like this, and I'm glad that we reached out to them.
Yeah, so the council, or the committee kind of wrestled with that process, and what we ended up doing is contacting Jeff Benzinger at the Courier, and they did a really nice article kind of celebrating their efforts and giving them recognition as part of their efforts when the logo was created, but at this point, we weren't anticipating doing anything additional to that, but this is something we went back and forth with as a committee as to, you know, how to recognize those efforts, because there were, you know, three or four, and, you know, this concept was somewhat created by the committee and then given to her, kind of prettied up, so there was kind of an iterative process, it wasn't, you know, just a completely clean. So it was a wrestling match and decided that we would give, you know, as much recognition as possible, but in terms of, you know, we're sensitive to a contest with an award type of thing, so we felt it was a good exercise of getting the school involved in the process and felt like we handled it to give her the recognition through the Series Courier and credit for it that way.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, with that, do you, you need a vote on the resolution, or?
Yes, we do need action, and if you wanted to open up-
Before we do that, I want to open it up to the public. Or is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
As far as I see that, the skateboarders are really going to love that.
There's easy ways to correct that, and there's a couple little simple design activities that you would incorporate around the edges to, you know, minimize the ability of skateboarders to utilize that. Obviously, they're not shown in the detail, but we're cognizant of those issues as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope you do a good job, like at least that center part looks like a good jump ramp, and a lot where the seating is, they can, like they do some of the other seating around town, skate along them, we'll see how that works out.
Reverend Condon's the closest to ever been here 100 years. But I got a question. Where's the 100-year-old building in Series, or did we tear them all down to put in freeways and stuff?
Jeff probably has a better answer to that than I do. I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure we've got some information and we can look that up.
So, I, you know, I'm all for celebrations, throw out a party, I'll be there. I just was wondering, I've looked all over, and I don't see any buildings other than one that's out on, I think it's, is it Faith Home? It's a little old house that looked like it's probably been there for 200 years, but I haven't seen anything that has a name on it that's got 100 years or plus, but maybe the committee's looked that up, but I, I'm all for it, go for it, because to have survived anybody to survive 100 years is pretty darn good. My last remaining aunt of eight kids celebrated her 100th anniversary in September, so it's Okay, people ask me where is Series, and I say, "That dope-infested, gang-infested, cop-shooting, cop-killing town, little town between South Modesto and Keys, bumped up against the airport district." That's where I think we're going.
Okay, so our, probably our oldest wouldn't be a building, but probably the water tower, Toby, would probably fall in that category of being something, it's 83 years old, so it's something that we really do want to get her looking beautiful again and shining, so just a thought.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move for approval, resolution number 2017-113.
Second. We have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now, item number 12, Safer Grant and Alternative Staffing Plan. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item this evening is in consideration of the staff's request for the opportunity to apply to FEMA, who issues the Safer Grant, for an extension. So the current grant was accepted by the city council on September 28th, 2015. The grant was for the amount of $1.2 million. The grant period started on March 3rd, 2016, and it will extend through March 2nd, 2018. It funds six positions. We've come to, as we've gotten closer to the end of the grant period, the primary reason for this request this evening is that we've realized that our expenditures are projected to be less than the grant amount, so we are projecting that by the end of the grant period on, in March, that the, there would be approximately $300,000 that would be left over. As a reimbursement grant, the way the grant works is we make the expenditures, we submit an invoice to FEMA, and then they reimburse us for those actual costs that we've incurred for the grant period. So because of some hirings that didn't start right when the grant period started, some vacancies through the term of the grant has left us with somewhat of a balance left over. FEMA has a process and an opportunity where we can extend the term of the grant to try to expend all of the funds that we were given from the grant. FEMA is not a big fans of having to return those monies back to the pool to get them allocated to other folks, because it's a process for them, so they do encourage the expenditure of all those funds, but those funds are also specifically earmarked for the personnel costs associated with the grant. The, again, the council made it very clear when this grant was awarded back on September- The, again, the council made it very clear when this grant was awarded back on September 28th, 2015, that, you know, there would not be an extension. However, we're asking the question this evening primarily, again, due to the fact that there are funds remaining. And so FEMA has indicated that they will entertain an extension up to six months, so that would take it to September 2nd. Another alternative consideration would be the end of the fiscal year, it would be June 30th, would be an opportunity for consideration of the relationship with the budget year that would start on July 1. The overall costs, as we've administered this grant, and this would be our second grant, recognize that there are some costs associated with those six employees that are over and above what the grant covers. It's approximately for the last three months, we have full data on, it's about $25,000 for that quarter, so roughly $8,000 and change that is not covered by the grant and that's related to those activities the grant does not fund. And again, that's an average over the course and it varies a little bit depending on the quarter. It's primarily related to overtime for those folks in that role. And the opportunity we would have would be to move to an alternate staffing plan, which would enable us to use these employees in what we would refer to as a relief position to be able to minimize or lower our overtime projection to offset that out-of-pocket cost, that $8,000. The overtime related to fire department is somewhat challenging related to whether it's injuries or, you know, vacations are pretty easy to plan for, but sicknesses are a challenge with a 24/7 operation. There's quite a bit of variability on overtime and what those needs are relative, again, to injuries and other things. We're comfortable with the statement that the reduction in overtime demand with an alternate staffing plan would offset those out-of-pocket costs for the balance of this extension. So this evening, the primary ask, and again, the reason why we're asking is because there's money left over from the grant, would be to simply request FEMA the extension of the grant up to the six months as they would allocate and, you know, what the council decides to do or not to do would dictate the next steps. In essence, the primary driver here is asking for a little more time relative to the funds that are available, recognizing we wouldn't be asking this question if there wasn't money available. So now I'm available for any questions and again, this, we do believe this helps with the overall operation and gives us a little more time to get a plan in place for what happens when this grant ends, but if the council were to direct us not to ask for that extension, we would be coming back to this body for kind of the plan of attack and that would happen, obviously, in January. We would need to move very quickly. The next steps, if the council were to approve the action, next steps are making the application, looking for the timing and moving in that direction. If the council were to say no to the extension, then we would be providing the 60-day notice per the side letter and moving forward with the plan to implement revised staffing reflective of those positions not being here as of March 3rd. Available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Is there anyone on the council that has any question of staff? Vice Mayor Klein.
Why wasn't the alternate staffing plan kept in place after the Safer Grant was awarded the second time around?
Well, with the Safer Grant, the award of the grant dictated the reopening of Station 17 or Station 3. That was a condition of the grant award. We were able to get an exemption from FEMA after the approval of this budget, of our current budget in July 1 that allows us to go back to that. We were not able to go to the alternate staffing plan with the award of the grant. That was a condition of the award.
So you said when we did the budget back in June, you got a waiver?
Once the budget was approved and implemented, we submitted and did receive approval from FEMA to not staff at the level from the original grant application, which would allow us to now move to the alternate staffing plan. We were not able to do that until that exemption was approved by FEMA.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, then I will open it up to the public. Anyone that would like to speak on item number 12, please come forth.
Good evening. Mike Miller with the Series Firefighters. I was hoping to hear more dialogue from you guys before I spoke, but based on, if we extend the grant, we're going to utilize those monies that are already there. $320,000 is a lot of money. It's virtually free money, especially if we use the alternative staffing plan. It's going to allow us to extend the grant through the fiscal, through to the end of the fiscal year. As City Manager said, that it's going to allow us more time to plan for the next step. I mean, we're here in December. I honestly am surprised that we're even here discussing much about it. To me, it's a, it's an easy decision because it's $320,000 and we're offering up alternative staffing plan where we're going to be able to plug our guys into vacation, coverage for vacation and sick to offset the costs and the overtime. So the impact that we're going to see if we extend it is virtually nothing, but the, to the city, but the impact that you're going to see with us is going to be tremendous. There's six guys that are with our department. They're going to get laid off. They know that. They signed a deal. They know they're going to get laid off, but to extend this into the end of the fiscal year is going to mean a lot to them. They're going to be able to have more time to look for jobs. There's two guys that are on probation that they can't apply and get on a displaced firefighter list until they're off probation. They're not off probation until, I think it's April or May. So extending that grant is going to allow them that luxury to continue working, get on that displaced firefighter list and find something that's going to work out better for them. They have families. They have, they have expenses. This would be a huge gift to extend the grant into the end of the fiscal year. So I urge you to listen to your city manager and his recommendation of continuing on with this grant and to the fiscal year with virtually zero cost to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak to the council on this item?
Mayor and council, I'd be delinquent in my responsibilities if I didn't share with you because I wasn't entirely sure that it was clear that if the council does extend the employment for these employees, the side letter that we currently have would be void because it does currently say that their notice would be provided based on that March 2nd, 2018 date. So I just wanted to make sure that was-
So along those lines, you bring up a very interesting question that I just thought of. So by doing that, it makes our original letter null and void, so does that give any, what's the word I'm looking for, inference that the position is now being extended and therefore they have moved from a two-year employee to almost permanent status?
Well, what it would eliminate was the original intention of the side letter, which was to lay off without having to go through the normal meet and confer process that we do with normal layoffs. The side letter was basically to expedite that layoff and not have to go through potential meet and confer with the employees.
So we would have to, at that point, go to meet and confer?
Over impacts, yes.
Okay.
Not over the actual layoff, but over impacts.
Okay. Thank you. Sure?
Anything that we can do on the contract side on a side letter to redo the side letter before, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to do it, but whatever we need to do contract-wise, we will do it.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to be on record as saying that I don't recommend this. I think our pressures on the general fund are becoming severe as our next item will be discussed. The contention that there's a tremendous amount of savings, I don't believe is correct. The $25,374 were actual costs. They're not averages, they're not projections. Those were the actual costs for September, October, and November. Those costs, if there's, if I went back and captured them for the entire time of the grant, we would have expended if another, well, we have expended another $100,000. Most of it comes from Measure H, but it's still a cost. It is a cost to the city. I also would be remiss and I did my own analysis of the alternative staffing plan and my analysis says it was a wash, that we really didn't save a lot of money. Mr. Wells and I have not had a chance to reconcile our methods. He did provide me his method today, but I was out ill most of the day and I didn't get a chance to really look at it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember DeRocette?
Give me a second.
You want to wait until I finish with the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Good evening, council, mayor, Chief Wells. Vince Milbeck, I'm an engineer downtown, Station 15, been here for five years. We've been in this dilemma since I got hired here, okay? I'm not sure what our reserves are right now, I was just thinking about it, but it seems pretty sketchy to me that all of a sudden, we find out Thursday night that one of these biggest moves is coming on these weekends. I haven't even had enough time over the weekend at work to be able to put my thoughts together on this. My question is, is how much educating of yourselves and how much input have you gotten from credible sources to be able to make a decision like this? Like Mike said, we're going to be letting go of six guys. Our department's done everything we can. Captain Spanning, Captain Miller have done a great job trying to educate everybody on why we need the people we have right now. I'm not saying we need six more or a dozen more. We're trying to operate at industry standards. I just looked it up before I came in here. They're recommending four uniformed personnel on a fire engine for an initial attack fire engine. We let go of these six, we have two frozen positions already. I don't know if we're going to be allowed to get those back. Now we're talking about eight. We don't have a chief, we don't have prevention, we don't have a fire marshal, we don't have a full-time secretary. Patty's doing both sides of the public safety as a part-time employee. She's doing a full-time secretary's job. So I just say we table this. Somehow, we need to meet in the middle. Captain Spanning, Captain Miller have done a great job doing everything they can to educate you guys. I know this. I had a conversation with you, Councilmember Lane, a couple months ago. I asked you one specific thing. I asked you to get with your colleagues and come to the fire stations, talk to the subject matter experts that do this job. That's what we need. I don't feel it's my job that I have to come hunt everybody down. I haven't. There's 30 of us that are putting it in the hands of Mike Miller and Captain Spanning to go meet with you guys and try to do the best they can. They're doing an exceptional job. They've taken so much time out of work, their personal lives, to do this. Where do we have to meet in the middle? To come together and educate ourselves so we can stop kicking this can down the road? I'm not going to say either way if I'm in agreeance or not with the medicinal marijuana coming into town, but I'll tell you, a couple months ago when it came up, you had the whole department excited. Mr. Wells is telling us we could be getting $100,000 a month. Now, I'm not saying I want to go tit-for-tat with PD. As far as bodies on the street, of course, we're going to need more security. I think everybody's in favor of that, but at least we would like to keep what we have now. I, like I said, I don't know what the reserves are, but I'd like to table this until the first of the year, maybe we can meet, come together and have some more education on this. Thank you.
Brandy Meyer, 1638, Rita Lane, Series. First, thank you for reappointing me to the Twomey River Regional Parks and its Advisory Committee. I appreciate that. And second, I just wanted to come up here as a citizen, nothing else, to say that I am in support of extending the grant to at least give you more time to come up with some solutions because it breaks my heart to think of six positions going away. We can't afford to lose that and I'd be disappointed if we didn't approve extending this grant. I know you didn't want to do extensions in the past, but it just seems like there's a no-brainer here and we need to do what we can to figure this out. Thank you.
I haven't had any experience in fire service, only about 35 years, and I think that here's the opportunity for the City Council to just extend the thing, learn what it's all about, make sure that you're not making the decision tonight that you're going to regret in 2025 or 2030. Right now, Series Fire does not have the staffing recommended by the national standards. You know, there's the standard of two in and two out. Two people in a burning building, two people out. You can do that with one engine when they first arrive at a fire. If you've only got three people on that engine, you can't do it. You've got to have another engine. So then that ties up six people and getting the second engine in sometimes takes a long time. Believe me, I've been there. So if you can just extend this grant to the end of the fiscal year and get yourselves educated on what really is needed in your fire department, you might be able to come up with some different alternate plans. I don't know, but you're sorely lacking in personnel right now in order to put all your engines and, believe me, that one engine having four people on it is like having two engines because they can do the job before that second engine arrives. That's the whole point. Otherwise, if you've got three people on the engine, you're tying up two engines and six people before you are able to get any more people there. It's, I've never understood the idea of that, well, we can get by. We can get by. Well, we've gotten by for so long that the can has crumpled completely. You have to start thinking about, let's see what we can do. I mean, together we achieve, but it doesn't seem like there's been a lot of, now I may be wrong, but it doesn't seem to me that there's been a lot of sit down with those people who do it every day and see what they need, not what they'd like to have, but what they need to do their job safely and efficiently. Thank you.
Just wanted to add one more thing. I'm not sure if I caught it right, but the city manager and the finance director have not compared numbers or can you confirm that?
The difference on, in terms of the overtime reduction, those exact numbers, and that's why I kept it relatively broad, is narrowing and drilling down to the exact expected savings. There's some additional analysis. We know if the council needs a specific number, that would take some additional work. That's all that we're saying.
Okay.
Fire and safety, police. We voted a half-cent sales tax for the police department over near the building over there. I remember a long time ago, we voted for that. We don't need a committee, we don't need Brett, we don't need Linda. It was already decided that we had voted for a half-cent sales tax to go to the police department. That's over. That's where the money should go. Now, the fire, we buy new, we build new fire stations because it's a minute and 40 seconds or it's two minutes and 30 seconds respawn time. That's why we voted to have the fire stations built. We need protect- time. That's why we voted to have the fire stations built. We need protection, and I hope that he never needs somebody to come and help him because he needs a fire truck or he needs an ambulance in two minutes instead of eight or nine minutes. We need these two people. We need cops, and we need fire people. And I don't understand why it's so difficult at the start of the year, December, January the first, that you can't make out, this is what we need, and have that done. I just, it just, my wife just paid our taxes on four houses today. That taxes should go for fire and police first, protection of the people. We paid the water bill, we raised the twelve thousand of us, just raised...Why don't you protect them, twelve thousand people, by giving them fire and police protection? That's what we pay for. That's what we paid for. Thank you.
Josh Cummings, Local 3636. Member, how are you, council? Tonight, I'd like to just inform you that by putting the staffing levels of the Series Fire Department at a lower level, you are therefore putting the citizens in jeopardy. Our service levels, we need to maintain so that we can provide for the citizens in this county and in this city. I think there's bigger impacts, too, to our organization. The six brothers in the back there that put their life on the line for this city and went hanging out tonight are only simply asking for you to do the same for them and extend their jobs for six months so we can figure this out. We have no fire chief at this time. You want to be a leader in this city? Mayor, please, listen to the membership. Listen to us and work with us, once for once. That's all we're asking for you to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Drossit?
Yeah, I'll try not to be long-winded. You know, in 2018, the SAFER grant was supposed to end, and this goes back to 2015 when, and again, I'm just going to state it, you know, it was supposed to end, and it was a pretty difficult time, me as a council member in regards to the backlash, in regards to the SAFER grant ending. Well, it's going to be no secret, whether it's March the first of 2018 or June the 30th, we're going to be losing six individuals. At the same time, too, we may be losing more individuals because if we want to try to get the budget correct, and I only have some small numbers, it's about twelve individuals that would have to be laid off outside of the six. You know, I am all for, and so just to be known, I am all for extending this until June the 30th. But at the same time, too, we have to understand that we're going to have to find some new way of doing business in Series because we can't do what we've been doing. I've been on the council since 2007 and '08, and we always kept thinking the grass was going to get greener, and that grass is not getting greener, and we haven't had any rain for a long period of time, obviously. But it's going to be looking like, and I know I've had some conversations with some of the fire, whether we have two stations, three stations, whether we have two stations with four individual at each station and taking a truck out when there's an EMT call because that's obviously a large number of services. But one of the things we've done is we've put Toby Wells in a situation to be our city manager. And good or bad, I feel that this is a plan that he has, and we support that plan, and we go until June the 30th. And if the plan doesn't work, then it's bad for Toby. No offense. And at the same time, too, I agree that I think that our CBO, and I think Toby got to get on the same page, just as I think our police and fire have to get on the same page. I mean, we're all here for the same reasons, and that is to make Series great and continue with the services that they need, like Mr. Donaldson stated. We have to supply the services, just as we have to supply the water. But I truly believe that there's going to be some major, some major changes going on, and we don't know what that looks like. I understand we don't have a fire chief right now. We have three BCS that are out there working their tails off. I also can see that, hey, we could cut this thing right now on March the first, say bye-bye, and save $25,000 for whatever the timeframe that would be in regards to $25,000 here and there. But I think that we're only going to be a couple months away that we can't make that decision at this present time. I really don't think that we can sit there and see how we can change the operations within this area, especially no offense to the city manager who's acting as our fire chief, which I think that needs to change. But I will not agree with this if we don't have some side letter written, so we're not going to be in that bind, as Bettina stated, that we would be accountable for having those people having to go to whatever that call thing would be. So if that has to be in there, then absolutely not. But anyways, that's all I have for right now.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes, I would like to, you know, start by saying, you know, appreciate every one of you guys, every single one of you, and, you know, this is always a tough thing. We knew we were going to get here, right, but didn't know we were going to have $300,000 left at the end of it either. And, you know, I hate giving money back to federal government. We fight hard to get these grants to start with. So in lieu of giving more transparency to the department and to staff and to us, I would support this going to the end of our fiscal year. I think during that time, we have to be cognizant, we're going to have to make changes, right? We're going to have to make these changes, and like Councilman Drossit said, it amounts to twelve bodies. I don't, not saying twelve fire guys, not saying twelve officers, I'm saying it's twelve, about $1200,000 positions is where we got to in this city. And you know what? We can't keep living this way. But I think we can do it together because we do want to do it for our citizens. We want to be able to do it together. We can't make these decisions. We can tell staff, let's get there, but, you know, we can't say, hey, we're going to take these guys over here, take three over here, three over here. You guys will decide how to do that. You know, that's up to you guys. And I would hope that our staff would recognize that and talk to you guys as on the fireside, police side, you know, wherever there's general fund positions, we need to go. I mean, I know that it's going to get fixed, I believe, with this council, before I'm off of this body, which will be in 2018. At the end of 2018, I will not be running again, and I hope we have this fixed in this city. I want to be a part of that, but I want you guys to be a part of that more than anything. So I would support moving forward till, again, June 30th with the side letter. Let's get that corrected. However, that needs to be done. And to Toby and Suzanne, I'd like to see you guys get together on your numbers and give us some updates on that, too, and what it really is, and let's get past all that, too, and then share that with our fire people and police and whoever needs to know. So at this time, I would support.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, listening to all arguments, listening to, you know, possibility of savings and things, you know, there's a lot of things that I have in question. You know, it's like, okay, why didn't we go to alternating staffing plans earlier? You know, we went through the same exercise two years ago when the first SAFER grant was getting ready to expire, and everybody was aware of it. Everybody came, you know, the fire department came and gave us their pitch and said, you know, hey, you know, wait, we need to set at the table, we need to do this. Well, you know what? It's here again. And, you know, my hat's off to Captain Spanning. I mean, he's reached out multiple times and talked to me. I gave him my phone number. I said, you know, I'm willing to talk. We did today. I'm going to say it extensively before I lost phone range. And, you know, but why do we wait until it gets here? You know, the fire service knew it's coming. The fire service knew that it's here. Why do we wait till it gets to the 13th hour? And we did the same thing two years ago. So, you know, I look at our overtime, I look at things, and I always question, why didn't we do this earlier? You know? And with that, so with that being said, before I ramble on, I'm going to say I'm not in support of extending it. I can't support extending it because there's other actions that I feel that should have been taken earlier to not put us in this situation, and we're in the same situation we were two years ago, is kicking the can down the thing, and let's talk, and let's talk, and let's talk, and nothing gets done. We're here again. So I'm saying I can't support it.
Councilmember Rhino?
When Mr. Wells made the comment that by extending it, it would allow us more time to figure out what we're going to do, well, we knew the grant was going to end in March, so why didn't we have discussions prior to December? That would be my first question. The next issue I have is that we're looking at a 14% general fund reserve at the end of the fiscal year, which is 4% lower than what we said we would ever go, and now we're going to be at 14% instead of the 18%. And it might be $320,000 in free money, but when I look at spending $25,639, I, to me, it's not free money. I'm going to go back to the fact that we can't give our employees pay raises, but we're going to take this $25,000 when these six SAFER grant employee, excuse me, six SAFER grant employees knew their grant was ending in March. They knew it. And, you know, I'm sorry, they have families and they haven't prepared, but it wasn't a surprise to them. They all signed the paperwork. So I would have to agree with Vice Mayor Klein, and I can't support it either.
Okay. A few of my comments. I have some concerns very much with what Vice Mayor Klein said, and I'm going to call it SAFER Grant One. We want to walk down that timeline. I seem to remember that we were in the same situation with SAFER Grant One, and we extended that and kept using what budget was left for that. And then we went as far as bridging the gap while we waited for SAFER Grant Two, and I don't know what that cost the city, but I feel it was a few hundred thousand dollars while we did that. Then we moved forward with SAFER Grant Two. Now we're at the point where we're going to extend it, and we just keep kicking the can down the road. I could not agree with you 100%. We need all the services that you have. We need all the people that you have. We can't afford all the people and all the services that you have. We can't use budget. And I've heard the public say, well, why are you doing downtown? Why are you doing the community center? Those funds on certain things can't be used for salaries. Okay? You have to understand, for the general fund budget that we have, we're not playing games with that money. 100% of the general fund budget comes to public safety, both police, fire, and parks and recreation. Of that budget, 90% goes to your salaries and benefits. 10% goes to the equipment and other things that you have. It's a real easy equation. Either the revenue gets bigger or the cost gets less. We can't pull in any other budget money from anywhere else, and so people need to stop thinking that we're wasting money on downtown. That's not our doing. That's the government, that is the state law, and we're not allowed to play around with that. Okay? So as much as you might like to say, why don't you use it from that, we legally can't. Okay? So you have to understand, we have to work within the parameters that we're given. I don't want to have to get rid of anybody. I don't want to have to get rid of any services. But like I've told a lot of you, when we have a dollar of revenue coming in, we can't spend $1.50. It doesn't work. And as Councilmember Rhino indicated, our reserves are now at 14%, are projected at 14%. We thought they were going to be at 18%. Given the timeline, if we continue down this path, we've got a couple of years maybe before our reserves are gone, and then we won't be having this discussion. We will be issuing pink slips. The city's not going to go bankrupt. I hope you understand that. So isn't a question about how can you give up these services? The question is, we have to give up these services because we cannot afford it. And those of you who want to look at the next item, it's not, it's not fun sitting here where we're going to have to take a temporary loan from the sewer and the water funds to fund the general fund because of cash flow. If we don't fix the problem now, we're going to have some real problems in a couple of years. And when we started with SAFER Grant One, that's been four years, and nothing's changed. I mean, what makes me think that we're going to sit up here in the next four months and come up with something that, four years, nothing's happened? So again, I agree 110% that we need all those things, and we need all of you. But I also have to make sure that the city is fiscally responsible, and right now we're not. And if I could take the money from the downtown redevelopment, and if I could take money from other areas and stuff it into the general fund, we would have done it. Believe me. There's no magic box that has all the money that we want. Again, it's either increase the revenue side, which we've tried to do on the cannabis side. But you have to realize, even with the projections that we're getting from that, the reserve is at 14%. Okay? So, and if that doesn't all materialize, it could be worse. So I tend to have to side with my colleagues to my left that I can't support extending this beyond the initial March 2nd timeline, which we've said all along, which was the two-year period. And at that point, I think, well, I know, we have to re-engineer the organization. We cannot continue to do things the way we always have done it. And I know, as painful as that is, I mean, I'd love to stay in Hurst Castle, too, but I might be able to only afford Motel Six. Unfortunately, that's just the way it is. So until we can come to that realization, I can't support continuing to go down there because there's no doubt in my mind, history repeats itself, and this is the third time we've had this conversation, and we've always extended it, and we come back to the table. So that's my feelings. My, I mean, I don't know that I can make a recommendation, but, or excuse me, a motion, but my recommendation would be that we take the grant through March 2nd, come up with a reorganized structure between now and then, and whatever surplus that we have, if we have a surplus, it sounds like there's a little question as to how much surplus we will have, that we offer that back to the federal government.
So is that?
I can't, I don't think I can make a motion.
Well, you can. In this particular, we didn't have a resolution, you know, for approval. So if there's...
Okay, the direction?
If you're not in favor of, so we would need action from you by minute order if you want to change the current approval. So what I'm hearing is three people who are against, two people in favor. So nothing needs to change because you've already given that direction with the side letter and the resolution that was approved authorizing this grant. So Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's any action necessary unless there's a motion to support the staff recommendation, which would then be a minute order. But in this particular case, because we already have the end of the grant period per the approved resolution and the side letter, there's nothing additional necessary unless you see something different.
That's correct, unless there was consensus to change it.
Okay, so with that, it sounds like we will continue with the original direction of the original term of the SAFER grant. Okay? With that, we will move on to item number 13, Resolution Number 2017-114, authorizing a short-term loan from the sewer fund to the general fund. Ms. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor. This is similar to last year. The only difference is we haven't gone negative yet. I anticipate going negative prior to the meeting in January. We have two payrolls and four accounts payables before we get our first installment of property tax. So I'm requesting that $500,000 be authorized so that should we go negative, there will be no need for a special meeting.
Okay. Are there, is there any question of staff on that? At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this? Okay, thank you. I'll just comment that, again, I want to get us back to the situation where we're not getting to the end of the year and borrowing from sewer and/or water funds to support the general fund. So I can't stress enough that we need to begin moving in a different direction with our general fund reserves. So...
So I'll look for direction from the council on this item.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-114?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Drossit?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. We have no discussion items this evening. Councilmember referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
I wouldn't like to go back to what I'd said, and I put the paperwork away on, I believe it was, sorry, the cannabis business, okay? You know, I would strongly encourage that, you know, that the council put a stop to any future, you know, dispensaries or manufacturing or, what would be the other one? Cultivation, okay? Until we can come back before the council and determine what kind of license types we want, what kind of manufacturing, whether we want retail medical or adult use. We need to understand more what the state has mandated, the county and their direction, and with their decisions within our sphere of influence. And we need to have more discussion with our police force and the fire to show the impacts. So I would recommend that we would, we would stop any future, you know, cannabis and come back to us with all the licensing and things. The other comment I would like to make is, Mr. Wells, can you please email me our discussion items for 2018?
Okay. So did you get the direction from what you would like to see? Perfect. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we'll move to reports. The only thing that I have to report is, we were scheduled, I believe, there's been a little confusion. I thought there was the bell ringing that was, I know Turlock did it last weekend, we were supposed to do it this weekend. I need to get some confirmation on that, but I, it looks like I'm not going to be available this weekend, so we may have, I may just see if I can round up some donations so it all have to acquiesce to the city of Turlock because I know Mr. Soyseth wants it, but I would still like to be able to donate a significant amount of money for that cause. So I'll let you know on that. I did want to say that I thought it was very impressive, the Christmas, opening of Christmas Tree Lane and the Christmas Tree present, performance area, and I thought Tracy and Cambria did a great job. I know it's always a lot of hard work and a lot of effort, and I wanted to thank them for putting that on. It seems like every year, it gets bigger and bigger and bigger and expands to the more neighborhoods, so I think it's something that the citizens seem to enjoy. That's all I had. Councilmember Rhino?
I'd like to thank Tracy and her staff as well, you ladies, and if you have guys on your staff. You do a wonderful job with the amount of people you have and the rest of our city's staff that have to put out barricades. Shane for donating, you know, all the different rides that we can ride in. I mean, it really is a fun time. I'd also like to comment on the downtown, how good it looks, and I'm really looking forward to when it's completed. And that would be it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
I would like to agree with Councilmember Rhino. The first night that that was open, I just happened to come back with my wife from Modesto, and I said, let's take a ride, and she truly was impressed, too. So, you know, downtown is fantastic, you know, park and rec with Christmas tree. My granddaughter just looks forward to it every year, and it's like she ropes me into going down there and setting for all the performances, which are really enjoyable. I think you do an excellent job coordinating that. You should be commended, and, you know, I think every year, it smooths easier and easier.
Okay. Councilmember Lane?
You know, Christmas Tree Lane was another good event, and was glad to participate in it this year once again, my wife and I, and, you know, the kids seemed to enjoy it, and families out there seemed to enjoy it. And Tracy, you guys do a marvelous job, and all the folks that threw out the city that worked on the event. I mean, it's, it couldn't be done without everybody's participation, so, again, thank you for that. And I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to all of you.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing.
Okay. Ms. Dean? Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Couple of quick items. The TOT Committee application closes this Friday. So far, we have one application, so we're looking for folks to apply for that committee, hopefully by this Friday. So please get those applications. They are available online. You can fill them out and submit online, so that will be very helpful. Also, wanted to provide an update to the Thomas Fire, which is down in Finterrick County, that we did send a grass rig and a strike team down to. That fire is now in the fifth largest fires in California history. 230,000 acres, it's only 15% contained, and is now heading in the direction of Santa Barbara. It is a pretty significant fire. 794 structures destroyed, 187 damaged, and over 18,000 structures are threatened. So it is a big deal, and something that is likely with the forecast going to get worse before it gets better. So just an update on that item. And then lastly, since we won't be meeting before the Christmas holiday and the New Year, so just a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Tom?
Just wanted to let you know that a new business, Laker Brewing, got all their building permits, and they're open for business now. Brewing Bear.
Great. Daryl?
Brewing Bear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items. Our Leaf and Limb Program is running a few days behind. We know we've had a few phone calls for that, so if they could be patient, they will be showing up within the next few days if you're on schedule. Secondly, the next phase of the bike path is underway this week along Moore Road, so you'll be seeing some delays there if that's one of your routes that you take during the day, so you may need to find an alternate route to get you where you need to go on time. And finally, the downtown Fourth Street, I do actually have pictures of the metalwork that's supposed to be placed with our series logo on it, our series name, the archways for next week. They are being power-coded as we speak, supposedly today down in Long Beach, and will be shipped this week, is what I'm told. As soon as we find out, we'll let Mr. Pezzing, Jeff, know that they're on their way, and he can come take pictures for the paper, and we'll celebrate that when that happens. That's it.
Right. Brent?
Nothing.
Mr. Collins?
Nothing.
Tracy?
I didn't, 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 I